Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, Carrie Sellers.
Present.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Treehill.
Present.
Councilmember Mbaka.
Present.
City Treasurer Correa.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Bell.
Present.
City Manager David Conville.
Present.
And Mayor Robertson, didn't I call your name?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
You did, in the beginning.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. So with that, I would like to ask if everybody would please stand and join me as I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing so that Pastor Joel Booker for the Inland Lighthouse Church can lead us in invocation. So everybody, please, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and... Good evening.
If we could bow our heads. Lord God, we thank you for this evening, and thank you for your presence that's here. We ask that you would be with these proceedings, bless our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, the city council members, and all of the elected officials and those that serve. We ask that you bless these proceedings, and you see the items on the agenda, give us wisdom and direction in all that is done, let our business be yours and yours be ours. We pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, thank you.
Doesn't mind very well, does he?
With that now, we would call on our city attorney, if he would like to report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mary. The council had two items on its closed session agenda this evening. First was a conference with labor negotiator. You did have a brief from your lead negotiator, and there were no other reportable actions on that item. You also had one item of anticipated litigation. You had a briefing from city staff, there was no reportable action. I will add that the mayor arrived in closed session at 5:05, and we recessed at 6:20. That ends my report, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now we will move to presentations and proclamations, and we have today one presentation, and that is going to be a presentation of some funds to the Rialto Police Department's memorial project, and that's going to be presented by TransTech.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And honorable council members, it's an absolute pleasure on behalf of TransTech to be here this evening and support the city of Rialto and the police department with a $12,000 check towards the memorial that they're fundraising for. At TransTech, we have our, a new motto, it's called "Your Projects, Our Passion." And really what that means is, we feel that we are community members and partners of the cities that we serve, and it's our commitment to promise to be here with the city for all of the community and civic events, and, you know, organizations supporting wonderful items like this memorial, like this one. So, thank you so much. I have Dave Bolinarsky with me, one of the principals, and my name is Melissa Demiracy, also one of the principals at TransTech.
All right, all right, well, congratulations. Photo ops, photo ops. All right.
I just also want to give a shout out to your police department, they are one of the finest in the Inland Empire and the East Valley, so it's a pleasure to really support them, thank you.
We know that, it's one of our best-kept secrets. Chief Kling.
Mayor and council, I just want to express my really gratitude and appreciation for the support. As you all know, that we're trying to raise funds, for those that are interested in the community, it's tax-deductible, and it goes towards the police memorial, and we're well off to where our goal of what we're trying to achieve, so any help we would really appreciate. And again, I just want to appreciate Councilmember Scott's efforts, because I think without his suggestion, we wouldn't be standing here with $12,000 worth of check, so thank you so much.
Okay, that is all that I have for presentations for this evening, and so with that, I'm going to move to oral communications, and Madam City Clerk, is there anyone who has expressed an interest in speaking on just general oral communications?
Yeah, I have two that is put in, June Hayes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I belated Happy New Year, since some have been here in the new year. I only come when I want to speak, other than that, I watch on TV. And somehow, I missed an agenda item that you had maybe last meeting, because I didn't watch last meeting. Years ago, when I first got involved, and I want to say, I've been politically involved in this city for over 30 years now, years ago, you were, you worked eight to five, and then you went to the 410 Plan, Monday through Thursday, then you went to what I call a split 410, where some people work Monday through Thursday and some Tuesday through Friday. And, you know, corporations exist as an organization to meet their own needs and to sell widgets to other people, you know, to the people. The city exists to serve the good people of Rialto. The 410 Plan is nice, but I remember last time you went to the 410 Plan, every time a citizen would come to me with a concern, it was a Friday, and I had to wait until Monday to help them get it resolved. The split 410 Plan that you were on until this one changed, worked very well. I know I'm late, you've made a decision, not a whole lot I can do about it, but I want to tell you, it does not serve the good people of Rialto. It is not in the best interests of the good people of Rialto. You need to be here and available, the staff need to be here and available when we, the people whom you serve, need you. My second thing, and thanks to Andy, and I thought Ed got it solved last time I was here, but I, it's been solved for tonight, but I want to remind you that the people have a right and a need to get into this building, to attend meetings, not to wait until 6:30 to get here. First meeting in December, I came down and was told, as usual, I couldn't come in until 6:30. Ed wanted to talk to me, so I was allowed in. I was told by the then-city manager, and also by the police chief, that it had been resolved, and that people would be allowed to come in. Nobody told me what time, but I assumed like maybe about 6 o'clock. And so I thought, okay, it's been resolved. I came down here today, and I was told I couldn't come in until you guys were out of closed session. That does not meet the people's needs. You exist to meet the needs, to provide services to the people of Rialto. When you forget that, you're not doing your job. When you forget that, the staff is not doing their job. You really need to remember who you serve. People need to get in here and get settled, not wait until the last minute to get in here. You need to be available to the people of Rialto, Monday through Friday. Or give us the name and phone number of all the department heads, so that we can get things done on Friday, so I can call people at home on their day off, so that things can get done. And with that, again, I wish you a Happy New Year, and thank you.
Thank you. All right.
The next person we have speaking is Mr. Lawrence Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, hi. Hello?
Well, I don't have anything to say, but I have a quick question. And if I had a desire to have a park somewhere in Rialto Bloomington, how would I go about doing that? I don't, I called the city, but I couldn't get through.
I'm sorry, you said if you had a desire?
A park.
A park?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Do I come to you guys, or can someone help me out? How, what steps do I need to take?
I think you, well, I believe the city manager's getting ready to hand you a card.
Thank you.
And I think he will be able to help with that. All right.
That's it.
That's it, okay. All right, that concludes oral communications, and now we will move on to the city, the agenda for this evening, if there's anything or any items that anyone either abstained or would like to pull for discussion on the consent calendar, or if there's anything, counsel, that you need to point out, that, I don't have a paper, so I assume I don't have to, I'm good. And is there anything else any of the members have? If not, an entertaining motion to second. It's been moved by Councilmember Treehill and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, Carrie Sellers. If there's no objections, the consent calendar moves forward, and now we'll move on to our first tab item. And I'm going to call on our new city manager, Mr. David Karamy, to discuss and present tab number one.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. There are three items of new business on your agenda this evening. This first item of new business, which may be found at tab one of your agenda, pertains to the State of California Water and Wastewater Arrangement Payment Program, which was established in 2021. This program was established to help alleviate water and wastewater debt for residential and commercial customers, which accrued during the COVID-19 pandemic. It details the allocation and dispersment of funds to Rialto Water Services Viola, including the identification of eligible accounts and administrative costs. The city's interim utilities manager, Stephen Depuja, will present the staff report this evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. So the matter before you tonight is based on some funding that was established back in 2021 by Assembly Bill Number 135, that allowed establishment of an arraigements program under COVID restrictions. The program was administered by the State Water Resources Control Board, and it allows utility providers like the city of Rialto to apply directly to the board for their eligible residential and commercial customers who had fallen behind on their water and wastewater bills during that period of COVID. The initial period covered arraigements that accrued between March 4th of 2020 and June 15th of 2021. The state had dispersed approximately $385 million of $985 million in federal allocations to this program in that first phase. During that program timeframe, the initial program timeframe, 1,119 water accounts and 70 commercial accounts were eligible for the program for a total request of $402,237.74 that was submitted to the board for reimbursement of those accounts. A check was issued to the city on January 12th of 2022, which included some administrative fees of approximately 3% that the city was eligible for. After dispersment of those accounts, there is a reconciliation period on those administrative costs, and that resulted in 13,168.11 being returned to the state on March 14th of 2022. So there was an overallocation of administrative fees, and that reconciliation resulted in a return to the state. Also during that period, 1,394 wastewater accounts and 67 commercial accounts were eligible for a total of $567,793.19. I do want to note, there was a typo in the staff report, as well as the resolutions, that actually had an additional seven in there, and unfortunately had indicated it was over $5 million, but the accurate number is 567,793.19. So just want to note that typo, and that was submitted. That also included the administrative estimate of approximately 3%. Again, after dispersment, there was a reconciliation of administrative cost that the city was eligible for, and there was a cost of $28,843.59 that was returned to the state under that program. On July 10th of 2023, Governor Newsom signed a budget trailer that expanded that arraigements program, so it extended it from the period ending in the initial, and began on June 16th of 2021 through December 31st of 2022. And the state used the remaining $600 million in federal funds to fund this program. So under the new extended arraigements program, it identified $760,272.59 in residential water accounts, $73,452.68 in commercial water accounts, $881,239.11 in residential wastewater accounts, and $94,958.47 in commercial wastewater accounts, for a total, and[1014.56][1015.00]$15,593.11 in those administrative allowances that the city is seeking reimbursement for, for a total of $1,824,579.14. This was submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board on December 13th of last year. Those dispersments are scheduled to begin as soon as the water board receives it. Once received, the application of credit of approximately 1.8 million would actually bring the city back to nearly pre-pandemic arraigements. So it's covering a lot of those costs that were experienced during that. The item was brought to the Water Subcommittee on January 24th of 2024 for review, with a recommendation to bring it forward. So staff is requesting the city council and the Rialto Utility Authority Board to ratify the acceptance of the $402,237.74 for water, and $567,793.19, again noting the correction for the resolutions that are pending before you, and acceptance of that, and authorizing the refund back to the state for $13,168.11 and $28,843.59 in those unused administrative funds. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Move approval.
Second. I have a question.
Sure.
And I note that those who've moved for approving it and seconded it, that's Councilmember Joe Baca Senior, and seconded by Councilmember Scott. You, as you were writing, reading off numbers?
Yeah.
There was one that you said it was 567,000, but actually, in the book, it says it's 5,677,933, so that's a number that's an error.
That's the typo, the 5 million. Unfortunately, there was an additional seven added in there, which was a typo.
567.
The correct number is 567. I just want to denote it so the resolutions are accurate.
And then 793.19.
Yeah.
And then in another one, you mentioned authorizing staff, it was in the analysis, and you said that, just want to clarify, in commercial water accounts, you said there was $881,239.11 residential wastewater account, and then you said there was 94,000, you said 958,000.
Oh, should be, I'm sorry.
And it should have been 258, right?
258.
Okay, because if you go back and play it, I heard you said 958, and so...
Yeah, I apologize.
This number is actually correct.
Correct.
All right, all right.
I just want to reiterate to staff, like, these are very, those are public documents, and it's really important to have the numbers kind of correct for transparency's sake, so... I'm hoping that when you review these agendas, that you're able to kind of catch them, because even in the report, the correct numbers actually, I believe it's the, I found it in the analysis. So I'm hoping that in the future, you'll be able to kind of look at these with the fine-tuned comb, especially when dollar amounts are...
Correct.
Thank you.
And noted, because I, you made reference to it being in the resolutions as well, and I was trying to go and find those points, so that we correct the resolutions, so... Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, is there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have tab two, and again, Mr. Karen, would you like to do the intro?
Counsel, your second item of new business this evening, which may be found at tab two of your agenda, pertains to city council consideration of a professional services agreement with Kim Turner for the city's 911 Emergency Dispatch Center. The Rialto Police Department operates a 24/7 emergency call center allotted for 15 emergency dispatchers, two lead dispatchers, and one supervisor. The supervisor, one lead dispatcher position, six emergency dispatcher positions are currently vacant. This staffing center reflects a longstanding challenge to attract, hire, train, and retain competent emergency dispatchers. This problem is not specific to the Rialto Police Department, many law enforcement agencies share in the difficulty of maintaining a fully-staffed communication center, and we intend to address that situation. The city's Chief of Police, Mark Kling, will present the staff report.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council, tab two actually requests and recommends that council approve a professional services agreement with Kim Turner LLC for dispatch assessment consultation services, approve a purchase order in the amount of $174,950 for a six-month term, and also authorize the city manager, his designee, to execute all the documents. Just a little bit of background, I think the manager actually covered quite a bit, so I'm going to kind of shoot through this, and then hopefully answer your questions. But, you know, we just want to express that we're extremely grateful for council, and what you've allowed us to get here with the state-of-the-art police department here in 2026, but we need to address a few issues that have long challenged our department, especially in our dispatch center. So we have a two-pronged approach. The address, the longstanding vacancies in our center that will lead to improved dispatcher hiring and training and retention, and overall employee satisfaction. What we know, that council is actually aware of, is the issues with our salaries. We know that our salaries are low, we know they're beneath median, we know council's aware of that with the common class studies, that's not what I'm here for tonight, but it is one of the prong approaches that we need to address. The second prong, was what I'm here to discuss with you, is that, as the manager said, we have 18 employees in our dispatch center, 15 dispatchers, two lead dispatchers, and a supervisor, and eight of those, or actually 10 of those positions are currently vacant. So staff put together some remedies by conferring with other law enforcement agencies who have been in the same similar situation as us. They've contracted with Kim Turner's LLC, and those agencies included San Bernardino, Glendale, Montebello, Inglewood, and Santa Clara. All recently had contracted with Kim, and our staff contacted their representatives, and they were really pleased with the outcome with what her services are. I know that council's concerned from time to time with sole-source providers. Kim is a sole-source provider, just so council understands, we did our due diligence, we actually sought out an RFP process through Santa Clara Police Department, who completed that process, but they got absolutely no one that would apply for the RFP. The other agencies followed suit, but because Kim is a sole-source and provides unique services, we actually cleared that through our procurement and purchasing division per our Minnesota Code, it was deemed that it was a sole-source for us to bring her here. Kim is a peace officer standard in training master instructor in the area of dispatching. She holds not one but two master's degrees, one from the Southern, University of Southern California, the second one from San Jose. She's also a bachelor, has a bachelor's degree from Loyola Marymont. She was a supervisor and managerial administrative positions for San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. She was also a police officer for six years, so you can see she kind of brings a well-balanced perspective to help us understand from a sworn side, and also provide what our needed, our needs are from a non-sworn dispatch side. She is one of the most distinguished instructors in the state of California against, with providing different disciplines for dispatching, and then she utilizes, well, actually, we utilize her in sending all of our dispatchers to a lot of her training, so our dispatchers are well-familiar with her. And then she's also, where I first met her was at a chiefs and sheriffs conference a couple of years ago, and without knowing, providing that to our staff, our staff went ahead, and I would hand it to the Sergeant Morales, who actually put this report together to bring Kim here for her observation, the shift scheduling review, which we haven't had in over a decade, along with our training manual review. She's also going to provide recruitment, which includes some videos for our recruitment strategies. The team-building aspect is what sets her apart, she'll bring actually two different types of team-building in counseling and mentoring to our department. So the current, there's current salary savings in our Communications Bureau Fiscal 2024 budget, so actually, what we're going to do is just do a budget adjustment if council approves it. Per the Minnesota Code, a vendor disclosure form is attached, and then before she commences any work, she'll pull the business license. I think it's really important for council to know that I have personally met and gained the support of not only RPBA on this aspect of bringing in a consultant, that all this is going to affect just our entire workforce. But also, I've got dispatchers here tonight, Ayesha Little, Yvonne Wright, and Denise Galardo, that, who I've also met with them, and are remaining dispatchers who are really supportive of this, and I also have Kim Turner here for, to answer any questions that you may have, and I can answer those also. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott and Councilmember Mbaka, you have your light on, all right.
Chief, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate the fact that you're bringing somebody on board, especially when we're looking at moving into a new police station, so we can have nothing but the best. And to the dispatchers, I want to let you know that we realize that we have some issues to fix over there, we're working on fixing those, we appreciate everything you do. Without you, our police officers certainly wouldn't be doing the great jobs that they're doing, so we know that you're frontline people for our police department. I'm just wondering tonight, who's dispatching is? Is Captain Vega over there?
So that's a whole third of our department.
There he is, he's in, no, there he is, he's in the row.
There he is. Hi, Captain Vega. But again, I really appreciate our dispatchers and the job they do for us, because I know that it's not an easy job. You have to be frontline, you have to deal with the community, and you have to deal with tragedies and situations that are not good situations, so we appreciate what you do. And thank you, Chief.
I think Kim is going to take us through that primary agency status that we've all long wanted here in this city.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mbaka.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Again, you know, thank you very much for bringing us, Chief Kling, for us to address the concern that we all have, and we all appreciate the dispatchers. We all realize that they're underpaid and should get paid a lot more, and hopefully that that will be remedied somewhere along the lines, and that would help with the retention and the recruitment of dispatchers that we need to fill. Well, my question would be to you, Chief Kling, when were you hired here as a chief of police?
Which time, sir?
Well, second time.
Second time was the last day of 2017.
Why is it that we've gone so long without a supervisor?
Actually, we haven't gone that long without a supervisor. We had a supervisor here when I first took back over the reins here at the department, so to speak, and immediately started looking at the improvements that needed to be done here. There was a supervisor here that moved on to a different department, and that was probably a needed addition for us. We then brought back a dispatch supervisor who had worked with me before, and she was here through the whole tenure that I've been here, except she left and retired once again in July. So we've just only been without a supervisor since July of '23.
Then my next question would be... Then my next question would be, in terms of the problems that we have, why do you, why do you feel that we've had problems besides the salaries in recruiting dispatchers when we're underserved right now and these ladies and plus others having to work additional hours?
So the, as I said, it's a two-pronged approach. I mean, I would certainly appreciate if council would give me direction to talk to the city manager and also the HR director outside of negotiations to just bring, simply bring us up to, to medium salary. If you made that direction tonight, I would bring that report back to you as soon as possible. That would get us up to median. That would actually help us in recruitment strategies. But more importantly, what Kim will be bringing us is how to retain and, and build and further develop. We are, we are below median. You all know that because you've seen the comp and class studies. There was a dispatcher, it was actually Denise, came into my office. Those of you that don't know, I have an extremely open door policy. My employees come in and talk to me all the time, and she asked me and posed a question, since you've been here both times since two thousand and six, when have we attracted, when have we attracted a lateral dispatcher to the city of Rialto? We lose people. We don't attract. And I said, you know, that's a great question. So this, this two-pronged approach will help us not only attract qualified dispatchers from other departments instead of us being pillaged and taken from us, but also help us retain. And the biggest issue that we have right now is the retention piece, because we are recruiting, we are hiring. But once we get them here, then because of our internal struggles and challenges to become that premier agency.
What do you mean by internal?
Internal stra, uh, internal policies. Have you ever been in a dispatch center?
No.
Okay, so it's probably half the size of your dais, and we put as many people as we can, and there are sometimes as many as four. And through interpersonal skills, challenges, nine one one calls, I think we handled a hundred and sixty-five thousand calls for service last year.
They're important to a lot of us in our community.
Hundred percent. So I think our working conditions are one thing. You're gonna, you solve that by moving us. They're in the basement. They're gonna be moved up to the second floor. The new center itself is going to be extremely fantastic, something none of us can even imagine. The reality to it is unless we correct the challenges that we have internally right now, we're just gonna transfer that problem into a new building. So our, our goal is get our salaries up. Number two, that second prong approach is to bring in someone with the qualifications of Kim Turner who understands the, the dynamics of a dispatch center and teach the administration for the future on how to properly manage that, including recruitment and retain, retention. And for once, have an updated policy manual that's gonna be consistent with our training for our dispatchers that has not been done in over a decade.
Who's gonna be responsible for implementation of the recommendations of the consultant that comes up with recommendations, not just in recruitment, but retention or cultural problems that we may have internal? Who's gonna be in charge?
My management team, by, at my direction.
And in some of those recommendations that may be coming forward from the consultant that will be working on doing a manual that will be used as a guideline. If some of those recommendations are submitted that certain personnel need to be removed or displaced, who's gonna take action since we don't have a supervisor, or when will we have a supervisor in place?
I'm not quite sure. I, at this point, I don't have an idea of anyone that needs to be removed.
I know, but if there's a recommendation, because you're bringing someone to assess and evaluate what needs to be done, and to look at what are the areas or problems that we currently have right now. And if we have any problems, there is gonna be some recommendations by the consultant to say we need to solve A, B, or C. So.
So Kim's job is not to come and solve A, B, and C pertaining to personnel or disciplinary actions. That's, that's what we do. She's here to solve A, B, and C to make us.
Then my question is, who's gonna be, you know, will we have a supervisor in place that will be able to do that if we look at implementing the consultants that we're gonna be hiring with recommendations?
Okay, so just so we're straight, there's, there's two things going on here. Number one, any disciplinary matter that needs to be handled internally with our department is directed by me, and ultimately, I'm the decision maker for the department. And I will make that disciplinary decision if it's a disciplinary, disciplinary problem. If it's a training issue, then we have a staff, including a dispatch supervisor, when we get that person hired, and a lieutenant and a captain that oversees that division, and that's how that chain would work to address any type of training issues. Disciplinary comes up under me.
And the contract that we will have for six months, is that person going to be aboard for six months? Or will it be another body or people that will be involved in part of that process with this contract?
Would you like to talk to Kim?
Well, whoever, you know, you're making the recommendations, so I just want an answer.
Good evening, council. I'll be more than happy to answer that question. I'm Kim Turner, and I'm the, the, the lead in this project. I do have additional folks on my team that help. One is a licensed clinical psychologist that leads the team building aspect. I don't know, I like sports analogies because I'm a huge sports fan. We can have the greatest roster, but if we don't have a chemistry in the team to meet the mission and move forward, it becomes very difficult, right? And we see that in retention. I also have another team builder that's actually on site that helps facilitate the team to move forward in a direction. Once we identify the tangible items that we're trying to achieve in terms of our training program and metrics. And what makes it so unique and so different is when you, when you talk to people who consult, they, they tell you what the problem is. I'm here to help you fix the problem, short term and long term. I walk alongside the staff as we implement those changes. So I'm very much immersed with the team. I pretty much will become a dispatcher by the end of this, because what we do is, is built for Rialto. It is from the ground up. It is not a boilerplate. It is not a template. So at the end of this, my goal is that you will never need me or anyone else like me again, that you'll be able to sustain what we bring forward. It's all based on best practices and recommendations that hold the national standard, and that you will be the envy of the county because you'll be fully staffed, and you'll be able to retain your folks for the long term.
Will our city manager or the council receive a report in terms of what the ongoing status will be of the?
You receive a final report, and that final report.
Anything in between there to say that maybe you guys need to do A, B, and C that can be implemented before the final action is actually?
Yes, I meet weekly with whoever the chief designates that I meet with weekly. So we're, we communicate very well. There will be no surprise.
Yeah, I just want, you know, our city manager, you know, to be aware of what's going on, what we need to implement, what changes need to be done. If changes need to be done, how can we correct any cultural problems that may exist or don't exist? And how can we, I guess you, you would say, establish a better prospective working environment? Because we want a positive working environment for the dispatchers, not only in new offices that they're gonna get when the new administration building is there, but where they're currently working right now, because that's gonna take us, when is it, when we say it's gonna be completed, twenty twenty-four or? Twenty-six, okay, twenty twenty-six, yeah.
Whatever is convenient for the manager, whether the city manager, whether that's bi-weekly, whether that's monthly, be more than happy to accommodate that.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. I think, Councilmember Trujillo, you have your light on.
Yeah, I just, I look forward with my colleagues, I look forward to kind of addressing some of these issues with this contract and, you know, look forward to also working on, you know, addressing the other prong issue of salaries and, you know, I, I do fully support the men and the women at the dispatch center who, you know, pick up that phone call, of people who are distressed on a daily basis. That and also, I guess this is a plug, you know, there's a nine one one saves act that's out there to reclassify you from clerical to a first responder, and I, that's something I, I also support. I, I believe you need to have your place as a first responder. You know, you are a protective, you know, staffer that, that, you know, you're basically kind of guiding people in their worst moments, and I, I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. And, and thank you for helping our residents of our, of Rialto, trying to get through the most, probably some of the most lowest part of their, their lives when they're trying to get help. So I, I want to thank you for being that voice that, that helps them get out of their, the trouble that they're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Chief, I just, I want to thank you and commend you for bringing this forward. I, I appreciate the fact that, that your vision of what we have here for the future of the city of Rialto is clear, and that you are bringing these things forward before that, before things happen. So appreciate all the proactiveness. I want to thank every single one of you. The work you guys do is amazing, and I just, I look forward to visiting you guys in your new station and with all the new training and all the, all the things that are gonna be happening here in the near future. So again, I, I fully support this, and I want to move for approval, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Protam. Thank you.
Do you mind if I have anything to say?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Mayor Protam moved, and I think Councilmember Trujillo seconded it. And I just want to take the opportunity to say to everybody, first off, one of our citizens got up earlier in communicate, oral communication and reminded us that we're here for our, for our citizens, our residents. And I have to say, regardless of what the hours are that we set, either four-ten or, or nine-eighty or eight to five, I recognize that our dispatch centers and the people such as our public safety, police, and fire are here serving our community twenty-four seven, okay? And I don't take a position that there's something that's broken that needs to be fixed. I think I take the position that everybody needs to have someone that they can look to and have an opportunity to reevaluate and also have someone that's the camaraderie, or just to know what's going on, because as I told you yesterday, Chief, and I appreciated our conversation as I drove to San Diego last night.
So did I, Mayor.
Most people, yeah, most people don't happen to be sitting in their home and in between commercials, pick up the phone and go, oh, you know, I think I'm gonna call the dispatch center and just tell them. You know, I have, really, you guys been doing okay, good. They, they, they rely on you. They know you're there. And I want to say, because I have called dispatch, and you guys have addressed the things firsthand, and not only have you called me back to see if it was, the thing was resolved, and it wasn't an emergency. It was just somebody's car broke down, concerned about him in a, in a a construction zone with limited mobility, but I really appreciate that you guys, one, called back, and two, I appreciate that Captain Vega called one time to see if, if the customer service side had worked. And I think you guys need to know, I feel, and I said it earlier, that I really appreciate seeing you when you're out and about. And I hate that we have to wait on a new building, because the chief knows, and a few of my colleagues, that I wanted to see you guys moved out of the basement, because we've been, I hate to say it, putting lipstick on a pig anyway, that we could have moved you out of the basement, put you up in the corner. At least you could have had glass that you could see out and nobody could see in, and you could be watching the corner of Willow and Rialto. I felt very much about being in a basement and being in that space, because it's tough. And chief said last night that, you know, probably some of us all here have not been dispatchers, well, I have to say, I wasn't a dispatcher, but guess what? I was a telephone switch operator, and it's a lonely job. Not a lot of people come by to see what you're doing, but there's a lot of people expecting you to do that job correctly. And, you know, I was only ten when I was running a switchboard, because you probably haven't seen one. You could go see it at the museum. But no, I want you guys to know that, that was ten when it happened, yeah. No, I really appreciate, and I feel like when I do see you, that you do like working here. And all that you guys have heard, that yes, we know that the salaries are not comparable, and we've gone through this conversation before about us being a place where you would want to stay here, but sometimes our income is just not comparable, and you have to move on so that you could also have a, a life of advancement and being able to aspire to what you would like. So that we look to be resolving. But thank you. Thank you for taking the time, Ms. Turner. Glad that you're here. I've read and that, you know, the six, the time that you were a police officer, I won't ask where, but I think it's really good when you have been in someone's shoes, then you could actually appreciate things that go on in your personal life when you come to work. Sometimes you have other things going on, but when you come to this job, your job, you have to still deal with people who are calling you because they have an emergency. And so I'm glad that we're moving on this, and I look forward to, to seeing that that's something that they will have as a resource, not as somebody that's looking to fix something, because I don't think anything's broken. So with that, anybody have objection to the motion? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Now on to tab three, and this is your swan song, your, your moment.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Carr, Carron.
The third item of new business this evening, which may be found at tab three of your agenda, returns at council's direction for reconsideration. This report pertains to civil engineering services for design of a grant-funded safe route to schools project. This project, once designed, will be put out to bid as required by state law. The city's director of maintenance and facilities, Tim Sullivan, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of council. All right, so I have a brief presentation regarding this item, which is a request to award proactive engineering a one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-dollar purchase order for the design of the Bemis Elementary Safe Routes to School Project. So a little background, the Rialto Safe Routes to School programs are sustained, sustained efforts by parents, schools, community leaders, and the city to improve health and well-being of children by enabling and encouraging them to walk and bicycle to school. The program examines conditions around schools and conducts projects and activities that improve safety and reduce traffic. As a result, these programs make bicycling and walking to school a safer and more appealing transportation choice, thus encouraging a healthy and active lifestyle of students. So as a result, I'm sorry, excuse me there, the city has been very successful with this program, which began in twenty fourteen. The active plan, which we are currently working from, was completed and accepted by the city in twenty nineteen and funded by, by a Caltrans grant for one-point-four million dollars. This slide outlines four of the current safe routes to school projects and the phase that they are in. The Bemis Elementary School, which is the agenda item tonight, is currently in the planning stage. Once staff has authorization to move into the design phase, the project begins to come to life. The design phase incorporates numerous elements and prepares projects for public bidding. Let me step back a little bit to the design phase of the Bemis project. So this item was presented to council on January twenty-third, and council posed several questions to staff to ensure that it is a successful project. The council instructed that this item be returned to tonight's meeting to provide answers to those questions. One of those was regarding potential utility conflicts. So several field visits were performed to identify potential issues within the proposed project area. Through these efforts, staff is aware of one location that may possess a possible conflict and require coordination with utility service providers, potentially both dry and wet utilities. So, and that's the intersection of Acacia Avenue and Valencia Street. We'll have a better understanding of the limitations through the design process and how to work around or address these conflicts at this location or any other locations that might come up during the design phase. Regarding the implementation of bicycle lanes on Pepper Avenue, because the Safe Routes to School adopted plan improvements, the improvements that were adopted in the original plan that we're working from were conceptual, the original improvements were proposing a bicycle lane on Pepper Avenue. These bicycle lanes were omitted from the proposal request that we're considering tonight, because those lanes were included, are included in the city of San Bernardino-led Pepper Avenue repaving project. They're both in the design, and, and we did receive confirmation from staff on that side that they were not omitted. So in closing, I would like to mention that there is sufficient funding to issue proactive engineering a design contract for the Bemis project. This project is currently grant-funded at approximately seven-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. In addition to the grant funding, a local match of four-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand. In addition to the grant funding, a local match of $457,000 has been budgeted through Measure I, which brings the total budget for this project to approximately $1.2 million. So with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody that wishes to speak on this tab?
No, we have not.
Move approval. I got a motion from Councilmember Baca. Hearing no, second, the item dies.
Thank you.
And that brings us to, that brings us to reports. Who would like to start off with reports?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Here's what's going on in Rialto. A new Tai Chi class at the Fitness and Aquatic Center is starting Tuesday and Thursday at 11:15 a.m. Valentine's will be at Andreessen Park tomorrow from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., so you can bring your fur babies out to do some pictures. Rialto Community Players Play Love, Sex, and the IRS open February 24th. Mobile Recreation will be Saturday, February 17th at Rialto City Park from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then Mobile Recreation, the following Saturday on February 24th, will be at Frisbee Park from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Feeding America Food Distribution will be at Grace Vargas Senior Center Wednesday, February 21st from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Grams for Grants will be at Grace Vargas Senior Center Wednesday, February 21st from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Legal Aid will be at Grace Vargas Senior Center Thursday, February 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Teen Glow Hunt registration opens up March 1st online. And then the 18th Annual State of the Women's Event will be March 2nd at CSUSB and it starts at 9:00 a.m. Swim Lesson Registration opens up March 2nd and 3rd. Eight, uh, it opens up at 8:00 a.m. online or in person. And then Basketball and Volleyball Spring Season Registration opens up March 4th at 7:00 a.m. in person or online. And that's your announcements.
Wow, thank you. Quite a bit going on, alright. So with that, did you already do reports from everyone?
Oh, we still got reports from everyone.
Okay, so who would like to start off? Councilmember Baca Senior, why don't you start?
No, I'd just like to report that the, the mayor and Mayor Protem attended the opening ceremonies for Consinera that just opened up on Saturday. It was well-attended by members of the community and the family. And I appreciate both the mayor and the Mayor Protem in attendance for this event. It was well-attended and that's all I have to report.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Treheal.
Oh, great, I, you know, I just wanted to wish my, my wife a Happy Valentine's Day and it's tomorrow and I know everybody's gonna be getting flowers and candy to their loved ones. So I just wanted to, to let my wife know that I love her so much and just wanted to say Happy Valentine's to me, to my wife. And my daughters, Catherine and Elizabeth, thank you. I won't forget the little ones.
Councilmember Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things, Mr. Carney, I would like to get a more accurate report on county projects that are going on within the, our sphere, specifically the, the project on Randall Avenue near Sampson Park, which is the bridge and widening of the flood control. I don't think we've gotten a report on the status of that project in a while. And then any other projects that the county might have going on in our sphere that we should maybe know about and can advise members of the community when those, what, where those projects are at and when they're going to be completed. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Garcia Peter at the north end on Casimilia, just north of Ayala, on the, north of the 210 freeway. It was really well-attended. I, as was already said, the mayor and Councilmember Baca were there. It was very well-attended and they had some live music and they had all kinds of snacks and things going on. So appreciate new businesses coming to our city and we really, it really looks good when our city is behind our investors. A small business community is the investors into the city and I really appreciate the fact that, that we do, that we make a big deal. And I also want to thank our city clerk for always organizing these and having them run on time and having everything go smooth. As I say, she's my favorite city clerk for all those reasons. And, but really want to welcome them to the city of Rialto. And I also want to acknowledge Black History Month and that we continue to celebrate the resilience, achievements, and the fight for equality here in the city of Rialto. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone Happy Valentines. I want to wish my wife and all the kids that are, apparently today is National Pancake Day, so they're, they are at a restaurant waiting for me with some pancakes. Since they noted that the city was almost, the meeting was almost over, so we better make it quick, otherwise the pancakes are going to be gone.
They're going to be cold?
Yeah, they're going to be cold, or gone. But anyway, I want to wish everyone here a Happy Valentines and that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, good, well, thank you, I'll, I'll be brief as well. You guys covered the ribbon cutting ceremony and it went really well. I, I loved the business opportunity and I actually, I don't know about any of you, but I had some, I'm some custom meat made while I was there and it's at home cooking now while we, whilst we speak. I want to say welcome officially to our new city manager. This is his first time in the seat and I really appreciate that he's looking at a lot of things in our city and I appreciate you being on board. And one of them that we spoke about, and while I love everybody gets up and, and has the staff report, and I think I talked with Mr. Car- Carney, Carney, and hopefully he'll talk with the clerk. And I would like to see our staff reports where we give the public the recommendation first. I'm accustomed to that kind of a format, I don't know if it's, but it's nice when you just come out and say what the recommendation is and then maybe we can, so wanted to just make that a suggestion. I don't know if anybody is opposed to it, but you know, things can change, so that's one thing. I wanted to publicly state, because I have heard from our residents, and I must say, as a resident, I'm not a happy camper with the safety project that's on baseline, that is totally, goes beyond a drought tolerant, is totally hard rock scape. And I was out there today, I saw people out there moving the dirt. I really wish we understood exactly what kind of project that is and I would hope that we figure out a way to make that project somewhat with some life to it because we are at a point in our time, and we've studied it, where it is more important to have some canopies and tree cover that helps to bring down the overall heat ambient in a community and not create heat islands. And when we have a hardscape through a section of baseline that basically is a residential area, it doesn't make sense to me and I don't know what happened, but I've expressed that to my colleague who sits with, beyond the Economic Development Committee and we were told that we saw this project, but I don't ever remember we saw this project and we talked about not having any landscape in it. That's a boulevard, it is established boulevard in our community and I think we need to figure out how do we come back with something that's a little bit more softer and beneficial to the community. Also, I want to publicly acknowledge that the work that's underway on Pepper Avenue from wherever you want to say down, from Rialto High School all the way up to Ninth Street, is a project that is the city of San Bernardino. We, the city, have some funds in it, we did partnership to handle a certain part of it, just a piece of it that's north of Ninth Street to Baseline and then on the south side of Baseline, Baseline down to, I think a little south of Etawanda. But the bulk of that project is oversaw by the city of San Bernardino. I would encourage anyone who has some concerns, you can call the city of Rialto, but we will be referring you to the city of San Bernardino because I have raised the concerns to the local elected officials over there as well. I've raised the concerns to the city manager, I think his first day with me, he rode that project before he came to work. And it's been a total lack of communicating with the community. People wake up and they find that the street is blocked, it's one way you can't cross. The good news, I guess, is this project eventually will be over sometime, hopefully the end of March. But I want to say, and then, I have to say, been informing them of potholes. Mr. Mike Corona was out yesterday and thank you, Mike, for coming out and, and doing some tree trimming in the neighborhood. But we also, there's potholes that are on Rialto Avenue and Pepper. One is a mini sinkhole and if you're at night, you need to navigate. We, I've told that we've sent that information over to the city of San Bernardino and Ms. Hayes is nodding her head because I believe Ms. Hayes brought it to our attention. I took a picture of it Sunday night, it's dead in the middle. So if for some reason someone has problems with tires or hit something, they really need to get a, a claim into the city of San Bernardino. And that's the staff reports I said, and so with that, those are the things that I had to cover. And anyone else have anything to say? I want to talk to you, city treasurer, I've got somebody who wants to buy your bike. Your motorcycle bike, not the bike, yes.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just remind a lot of the public that's out there that tomorrow's Ash Wednesday as well. So don't forget, for those of you that want practice religion, practice going and whatever you're going to give up, it's up to you. And then, of course, I appreciate the reminder that tomorrow is Valentine's Day, sometimes we forget. I just want to wish my wife a Happy Valentine's Day. I've been married, I've been married 55 years, so I want to wish her a Happy Valentine's Day.
Anybody else feel to, anyone else? Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Treheal, seconded by Mayor Protem, Carazellis. Any objections, hearing none, we're closed, we're off. Nada.